I didn't see the lives.
It's nine o'clock, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Going to call this meeting to order? We need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from November eighteenth, twenty twenty fourth.
So moved.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, first item on the agenda is secondary roads, Zach's got quite a few items to discuss, so we'll just do these one by one, if that's okay? Good morning, Zach.
Morning. Uh, first thing, uh, got a couple sets of plans for replacing a couple of small bridges with, uh, reinforced concrete, precast reinforced concrete box covers. Um, the first one is on three hundred and twentieth street. On this one is between Sycamore and Timber, we just northwest of Coon Rapids. Um, this is a s- a small, small, small bridge, be replacing with like an eight, eight foot by eight foot concrete box cover. Um, this would be u- utilizing, um, federal, federal funds, BR funds. Um, nothing really, uh, extravagant about the project, um. Believe there's not really any utilities in the way, uh, wind stream is in the, in the area, but I think it's gonna be out of our, out of our way. Um, this would be, uh, for a March letting go side with D V O T.
And you. Your first should take a bridge out and we'll put a cover in and then be gravelled just like a regular.
Correct, yep. We, and I, we haven't, I haven't talked about it a lot, Mark, but we've been doing a lot of those with, if there's, if it's a possible way to put in a fox cover rather than a bridge. Or, um, uh, traffic going across it and longevity, it's a, have a wind win, plus even cost wise, it's generally cheaper than a bridge, so we try to go to those if we can all can, so.
The big thing is we, big thing is we don't disrupt, uh, traffic in the area for very short period of time, cause these can basically, if everything works about, within five days, you can have it done.
Yeah, I mean usually by the time you start to stop, it might be two weeks, but it, it's, they're relatively quick. If the holiday is going in an hour, so good.
And then the best part, you t- decide to take it out someday, you can take it out and use it somewhere else.
Any questions on that one?
Did you want? We have to do motions for each and that they draw one.
I think it'd be good to.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And I'll sign all these at the end.
That'd be great. Uh, second one is on three hundred street. Um, this one is just east of Walnut Avenue, northeast of Coon Rapids. Um, that's a little bit bigger bridge, this is, uh, I believe an eighteen by t- by ten foot concrete box. Um, again, uh, pretty s- pretty simple, um, there is overhead power in this area, but that shouldn't cause us too much trouble. Um.
This one's posted and right now a single lane, correct?
I believe so.
I went down Saturday.
Not posted very much, but.
Right, it was, it was posted, no.
And it started, I think it started to see some, some issues with the piling.
Wood plank too.
Yep. So.
Um, this is about as big as they get, isn't it?
Uh, we can go for a single box, they can go all the way up to twenty-four foot for sure. Um, but it's, it's a decent sized one, I see a lot of them going into the size, but, uh, um, same, same funding source, same letting date.
You have an engineer's estimate on it.
Um.
I realize it's federal dollars, but.
Approximately two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Wow.
The other one was like what, a hundred?
Yeah, a hundred and, a hundred and forty-five ish. But, uh, we, we will tie these projects together, that way we have one contractor does both of them. Um, makes things easier for us and hopefully is a benefit to the contractor too, they're not mobilizing in for two separate boxes or mobilize it. One contractor's mobilizing in for two boxes rather than two contractors.
Yeah, they're both real, relatively close in nature.
Not too far apart, so.
So if it's a March letting, when do you think the completion will be?
I mean, they could start as early as probably the end of April, uh, biggest thing that the box coverage is, is they don't, they build them for the projects, so once they know they're the contractor, they have to deploy the box, it takes a little bit of time for that to get built. Sometimes that, there's a some laying time there, uh, with those companies, but it could be as early as the end of April, it couldn't, they could start as late as August, so kinda, it's kinda up to the contractor and.
Instruction season.
Pretty much, pretty much. Any questions on this one?
Good question.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, since we're using federal funds, um, we have to do a federal aid agreement with the D O T, basically stating that we're using federal, federal funds and the items that you have to hit as you go through that. Basically, we have to let the project, I believe, within three years, which obviously we're letting it coming up in March, so that's not a problem. Um, standard agreements with the D O T, nothing different than normal, um. But there's one for each of these projects. Each project has its own federal aid agreement, so. Uh, first one is for, uh, I call it parent one seventy-two. Um, shows the, or S, or programmed amount of the construction costs, um. This is, you go on three twenty-second street. Any questions on federal aid agreement?
So these would be totally paid for by federal dollars?
Yep, a hundred percent.
So moved.
My second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, the second one is for the bridge on three hundredth street. Um, same thing, um, putting our estimated cost, we had this one was a little higher, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, um. It's, uh, same language as the other one.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, I don't know if I got any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, the next two pretty much kinda go together, this is looking to purchase and put together a medium duty snowplow truck. Uh, must be a little bit different than what we've had, our tandem trucks, be hopefully using, utilizing this for our town's snowplow route and helping clean up intersections and such. Uh, with tandem trucks, it's possibly harder to navigate intersections when you're trying to clean them up, especially if you're doing a lot of turning. Uh, hopefully this would help with that a little bit. Um, definitely the cost savings compared to a, a tandem truck. The first first item here is for the snow equipment, basically the the front hitch, the, the wing, the front, uh, snow plow and box and the standard and the hydraulic package for that, so that's all, that's all this, this quote.
They include the spreader too, right?
With the spreader, yes.
It's almost the same price as the vehicle.
Almost.
You add each other about the same price as what a regular one is, I guess, Peter?
Well, it, we're still, we're like a hundred and thirty-some thousand, thirty-five, we're, well, probably took the approach of two fifty, like you move the handy truck, so.
So is this the same company that was doing the the other chassis we bought us?
Yes, they are. The same place we get our, our other snow equipment from, the the standard identical to what we have on our, our big trucks. Um, the plow and wing are a little bit different, cause they're a little, they're not quite as heavy, cause it's all a little bit lighter, you know, it's all, but. Same hydraulic company package, same kind of type of control and strength, keep things uh, consistent with what we have. Any questions on that?
I should approve a truck first.
Talk about that first. So, um, this is a sixty-five hundred series truck that we're looking at, regular cab, road drive. Um, went out and got quotes from two different, uh, vendors, either both um, on the, on the lot, twenty-twenty fours um, that are available. Um, I think they checked, they're, they're very minor differences, but they checked all the boxes for what we need.
Did, uh, just a question, did you try to make it out here quick?
I did local, I didn't because the with these being commercial, I don't think that they can get these, I'm I didn't call, but I'm sure that's something, and it, and they don't have anyone on the lot, that's I was trying to get these moving forward so we can kind of, um, be ready for this winter, but so we can get it, uh, bought and get it built this summer, so.
So back up quick. What was? I need another casing purple.
So, so the pricing for
the box? Equal to that?
That the quote for that quote was sixty-two thousand, eight eighty-five, sixteen cents. And we got two quotes on the truck. One from Bob Brown. And that was sixty-eight thousand, nine eighty.
Aye.
And we got a quote from Carl Chevrolet or Carl Auto Group.
Sorry, you probably have this in your email, I just.
Yep.
Verify that.
Nope, that's fine, sixty-eight, five ninety-seven, sixty, so. For
three hundred and eighty-three dollars difference?
Just under four hundred, it's cheaper. Um, the the specs work out a little bit better for the long, but Carl, that would be the, if I, if they were identical, that would be the one that I would, I would pick to, but it being the cheaper to, that's the one where it can go.
Well, does that, the cost of that, if it's an installation, that's sixty-two thousand?
It isn't, so we have paper installation, we're, we're gonna build it ourselves. I, if I had to get that, that probably, roughly twenty-five thousand.
Else we do it ourselves, like, but I just, that was more than a major error.
Right. There, there, there could be, I mean, there will be some, uh, it's minus cost with like hydraulic hoses, fittings, and some things that may not be included here that we have in our parts inventory, but we will get, but, uh, the main equipment at the truck, obviously, is on both of these.
Are we getting rid of a vehicle or we're adding to our fleet this?
That's what we would be adding to our fleet, eventually we will get rid of some of our tandem, a couple of our tandem trucks, but we're trying to, I guess, kinda catch back up, we we fell behind a little bit, kinda when COVID hit as far as getting trucks, so we're trying to catch back up a little bit on that, so, in that sample.
So th- this truck would be just used basically around, around Carroll here, right?
Ideally, we'd use it as our town ra- our town route truck for winter, winter work, and then the summer route, I think it'd be very advantageous if it has the sides drop down, so you can use different, different things.
About boulder pure.
And skid, skid, or around, or multiple things, it's like a, a lot more maneuverable than a tandem truck, obviously, so.
And this was in your budget?
Correct. Any questions?
Your recommendation would be the Carl Chevrolet?
Correct.
You say that picture, was there more on the, uh, Bob Brown or?
It's, it's really close, um, like the one thing is the the Bob Brown's, a, a two alternator setup, the Carl, the one alternator setup, the one alternator setup, it's better with how we connect our our, our pump, P Q pump or hydraulics fits better with that, that's why we can't do it the other way, but definitely better. Uh, and there's some minor things, I think the mirrors are a little bit better, I'm on Carl, a little bit bigger. Like I said, minor, minor differences.
I'll make a motion, I'll try, if you go ahead and purchase one from Carl Chevrolet.
In the amount of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Yep. I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? And if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Now we gotta back up to do this one.
You probably need a motion on equipment too.
Yes. I wonder if this one did you try, or sort of relations, a unique piece of equipment?
You, you keep pretty equipment, we, we've been working with them pretty much, um, specifically with our snow equipment, just to try to keep same style and same brand of equipment, so. Um, I know when I first started here, like four years ago, four and a half years ago, we did look into other vendors and not saying they're always be the cheapest, but they seem very competitive and they seem to fit the bill, trying to stay consistent with what we're trying to build.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion on the equipment for highway truck equipment for the amount of sixty-two thousand, eight eighty-five, sixteen.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? Now, all those in favor saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, next one on the list is Scout Clean Energy reached out to me in regard to uh, road use agreement, maintenance road use agreement for the proposed potential wind farm that's coming to Carroll County. Originally we had in there that we were not gonna allow any cranes crossing any of our roads, they're high, they're heavy with cranes. Um, they agreed to that as they're out looking for contractors, that's something contractors have noticed and have had a hard time with because there's many crane crossings that they have, we had, they have to break down their crane to move it across the road to go to the next site. Um, that's a what I understand, a, a week long process to break down a crane and put it back together. They've now asked if there's any way that they could cross a road to with those heavy lift cranes. Um, they provided a map to me of the locations they'd like to cross, and I should forward that onto you. And there's what they've asked me when they came in was crossing gravel roads. Um, I told them that we would entertain that. As, uh, when I got the map, there was two crossings on a paved road, um, I don't in my opinion, I don't think that's a, a wise decision, I think we should stick to our road use agreement and have to break down those cranes and not cross the paved roads, those are both on the O C O road, they are.
And.
Correct. Which, which again, is a relatively, I mean, paid.
Uh huh.
So if they tear the road, they take care of the, they're fixing, refixing the road.
They say, they say they would and it's, but they never get it put back the way it was, you don't have the ride and it's not I guess the repair is not like the original, what it was. That's where I look especially on a a new, newly resurfaced road and prefer not to put down that back.
When they did that north of Arcadia, they went across that O C O North Arcadia. And where they did it, there's we had a hard time getting rid of them, they had some dips in them.
They filled them in, but they're, they're still they're pretty much there until you resurface the next time.
Sometimes I've noticed that things that may happen a year or two down the road, they tore something up underneath that base there and you're gonna have more problems down the road.
You, you, you're definitely in touch with the lab. My, my suggestion is, is, is to consider allowing them crossing the gravel roads, and I believe there's one level B road that they want to cross. Um, on gravel roads, my suggestion would be to have a two foot of fill of some sort, and then the crane that's down to cross to bridge that, that's what they got on the pavement, there still was, was damaged. The gravel, it was a little bit easier to to take care of, I guess, obviously, you don't have the uh, the cost and the ongoing maintenance for a long time.
Is that crane roughly two hundred ton?
Too long? I think it's about eight hundred and fifty ton, whoa. I remember it. Oh, it's, it's, it's a big crane.
So if they do haul in the dirt and, I mean, they have to return the road to original, correct?
They would have to excuse me, haul the fill and then clean it back up again afterwards. Um, I would also ask them to provide forty-eight hours notice and then also um, take care of the traffic control, you know, making sure that they have real close signs out and what, depending how long the closure is gonna be.
Are they gonna be doing a bunch of, uh, intersections too, where they need to add fill and build intersections up for the turns?
They will.
Will these cranes be crossing those, the same place?
I, I don't think so.
Or they just can go straight across the road?
Straight across the so.
So obviously have to have agreement with the property owners on both sides.
Yep, and I, I believe they probably already do, otherwise they wouldn't even be asking, these are places where they have already have agreement signed, would be my assumption, I don't, I don't know that for sure, but the, the intersection improvements will be a separate, separate process, and they'll have to illustrate how, what they plan on doing and how they plan on doing that. I think there's still work on our routes, get it out, which way they're going, I haven't seen that, any of that information yet, so. See, that's, that'll, they'll come, so.
Well, and I, I question how much more is gonna be added to this map? You look at this map on Concord and two hundred and seventieth street, there's an extra right above that?
Uh huh.
Hey, you tell me how they're getting to those other ones. They're, they're not got them all on there yet, I don't think.
So my, my assumption is, Jane, I'm completely assuming here, I don't know, I need, when you have more conversations with them, but there may not be a continuous land parcel between, so maybe they were assuming they have to break down to get to west of Concord, north of two seventieth from the other axis, they, maybe they have to break down to that spot. That's the only thing I can think of of why they were doing it that way. Otherwise, I don't know why they wouldn't, wouldn't have it on a back bridge.
Yeah, that's, that's why, and I didn't look at this whole map, but this, I, I zoned on that area and I just seen that one extra and I thought, well, now wait a minute, how you get from here to there?
There's, there's probably gonna be several teardowns.
But that makes sense if there's not a, a Jason signer on the other side, they may have to break.
That's my assumption, I, there's three or four places on this map that should, that work that way. There could be something else, other reasons, but that's, that was mine.
Well, and I, I will tell you, I do agree with everything you said, I think I have no problem with them doing a, doing a gravel crossings. But absolutely not, no pavement.
Do you know what Crawford County did?
Yes, and they, they're allowing it, but I don't know, I'd have to tell them. I know the road use agreement the base road use, for the road use agreement was the same, that's what we started with. But we made some modifications, so, or just from what Crawford approved, I think that was one of them, but.
Do you have it in there that they can only cross during daytime?
Yeah. Um, it's, I guess there's nothing in there right now because they weren't able to cross, so.
He's got a good point.
That's something you wanna think about, or?
Well.
Cause they, if they're providing traffic control also.
It's pluses and minuses, um, the previous projects where I've dealt with this, um, we actually made it crossing. Because then there.
Less traffic.
We weren't, we weren't affecting traffic cause it was, that time it was in fall during harvest. So we thought we were trying to minimize the amount of disruption. So. Um, so I, I guess I they have to be, I guess, set up or prepared for it if they want to do it at night, but I guess it's me, I would I wouldn't have a huge concern, you'd play, but I think it's something probably needs to be discussed when we know when they're doing it, the time of year situation.
So another one thing I just thought of, I assume these are all where there's no high lines in?
If there are, if there are power lines there, they'll be dropping them for them to cross, I'm sure. That's usually what they do, they'll, they'll pay the utility company to.
And they will do that at night?
Well, they probably drop the wires for a couple of days or a day or two, or whatever it takes.
Then you.
A- again, that's situational, Dean, I guess, I don't.
Probably reroute to, if they can reroute it back here.
If they can back through the power of what the situation might be.
And I guess, you know, that's not our problem.
The, the board was the one to sign off on the road, the road use agreement, and they already directed me to sign off there, to completely clarify, so I wanted to.
But this is, this is revision A right now, and there might be a revision B, C, D, yeah.
Be, uh, but at least I guess where we stand right now. Want to get your feelings and thoughts on, on making this accommodation for them, I guess, I, I think it's I think it's reasonable, um, I'm just surprised that they would be agreed with in the first place, without having any pretty crossings, I figured they want some, so. I it's the kind of expect this to some extent.
So do you have a hard copy of what they're wanting you to sign, or is this just a proposal, and you haven't seen?
This is, there's no languages, this is a proposal, see if.
So you're wondering whether to go forward or not?
One of my concerns. This was just me looking for the taxpayers, but this is potentially fifteen crossings that they're not gonna have to tear down and rebuild the cranes, we're doing them a favor. Is there something we can get in return?
Well, they're supposed to repair, repair the road, right?
They're supposed to repair the road.
But we're also taking, so if it takes a week, that's fifteen weeks we're taking off the project.
Their, their, their costs should be less when it comes to that, but I guess my thought is they're, they're here disrupting our, our taxpayers fifteen weeks last too. Uh, to me, that's the saving.
Of construction time?
That's, that's my, where I see the savings, I guess.
Okay.
So you're just looking for consensus from the board?
Correct.
I think if you keep having conversations with them, we're open to the idea of not having to tear down the crane, clearly not on pavement, that's an absolute no. But.
Yeah.
So, keep having that conversation then.
Good.
Okay.
Um, ours department update, just a few things, um, we did receive our wheel loader last week, that we had, um, I guess, purchased or agreed to purchase here about four months ago, three months ago. Winding down our construction activities, trying to get a few things done this week, so it's gonna be cold freeze up for the most part, not that there won't be a window that it warms up a little bit, but at least in the immediate future, it looks like it's gonna get cold. Um, we are starting to haul some, some limestone rock from Claire, get, try and re, re restock or pile, um, probably will look if you wanna, maybe contract haul, yeah. And be your first, be the first next year, as well, but we'll see how much we can get all in, all through the first, so. Another, another project upcoming, that will be coming in the next couple of weeks, um, is the, the bridge south of Rawson on the Green County line. It's Green County's bridge, they're leading the, the charge on that one. But, uh, we're getting close to getting final plans prepared for that one. That'd be another, I believe, March, March or April running, for that, really being constructed here, so. There will be a detour associated with that one, more than likely extending Green County, kind of Bruce Ram, back highway thirty, which is the shortest state.
Old Zephyr.
Correct, Apple. That's all I have.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve payables on the amount of five hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents, did anybody have any questions?
So.
Yeah.
No. Majority of it was, uh,
interest on the Essex in the jail. Debt service. I have no questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
My second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the class, we have two of them, one for Rick Simons and one for Julie Clancy.
We never did get the aerial for that, uh, Simons, but I, I looked it up. Um, I'll make a motion, we approve both, uh, flats.
I can second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is remove, um, county ordinances, and this has kinda been an ongoing project that we've been working on for the last three years. Um, one of our ordinances states that we need to recodify county ordinances every five years. Um, what Courtney did, and Courtney, thank you for all your help with this as well. What she did is she sent out all the ordinances and anything. What she did is she sent out all the ordinances and anything or any office elected official or department head that had anything. That pertained to their office, they took a, they took the initiative and looked into if anything needed to be changed. Um, we have sent it over to the county attorney a few times. There are. Fifteen of them, I think so far that probably needs some corrections, changes, or deleting completely altogether. For instance, conservation, they have an ATV, U T V, that's not even. A thing anymore, you refer to the state. That's where you used to not be able to buy, drive your U T Vs anywhere, but that has changed, we refer to the state. An option was, I reached out to region twelve, and Chris Whitaker does do a lot of these ordinance reviews. We can see, um, what it would cost to have him look over. What we have changed so far, that is an option, or if you guys feel comfortable, we could. Proceed ahead and approve them ourselves. Courtney, do you have anything you want to add or?
I just don't think so.
For, yeah, three years.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything to add.
And she sent. An Excel spreadsheet, I think you guys saw that. Um. With the current changes that needs to be, like, needs to be repealed, replaced with ordinance thirty five. So I just kind of wanted some direction on the board. I don't want to keep kicking this one down. I'd like to recodify as soon as possible.
So you're suggesting go to region twelve for the language?
Um, yeah. I think we've tried to have some communication, um, other ways, and we're just not. Really getting to work, so if you guys would want me to, I can see, I can send this Excel spreadsheet to Chris and he can come up with a. A quote. On what it would cost to have region twelve take a look at it.
But we would still want legal to review it before we approve them.
And whenever you're changing an ordinance, there's public hearings. Um, so that, I mean, this isn't gonna happen in a week. Do you have to have two public hearings? To have one and you can revoke, um. Not do the second one, right?
Wait, I think you can just have one, however, on something like this, I think you'd have at least a second hearing. Just because reading, I think they call it a reading, and then you could waive the third.
Okay, that's a good idea, because there are quite a few that would be changing some of the wording in.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I think definitely we want somebody to look at it besides just us. Um. It's too bad we can't. Get it done the other way, but. Like you said, it's been dragging out. We need to move on. I would say, let's get Chris, see what he gets.
Like the local option sales tax, I mean, that's pretty black and white, and that's an easy change for.
Well, a lot, a lot of these are pretty black and white, but I think you want to make sure.
We a hundred percent.
I think the thing is, we want to make sure that there isn't anything in the code of Iowa that we're conflicting with.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion or anything, you just got direction.
You guys want me to, yep, okay, I got directions, so.
Man, here I thought we were gonna have a long discussion today.
Well, we can, if you'd like, we'd be beating a dead horse. Fifty months.
I think we've. We've covered this quite a few times.
Okay. Next up, manure management annual updates. We have three of them from seven five five Woodford Creek Farms, section twenty eight Richland Township. Added acres, change crop rotation or optimum yields and used to manure analysis. Seven five six Woodford Creek Farms, section twenty seven, Richland Township changed or added acres, changed crop rotation or optimum yields and used manure analysis. And ninety three Woodford Creek Farms, section twenty two, Richland Township. Added acres, change crop rotation or optimum yields and used manure analysis. And we are to committee reports.
I can. Go ahead. All right, I can go. Last week on Monday, I had newspaper and radio. And then at noon, we had a safety committee meeting. And we reviewed the safety guidance manual for changes. Um, nothing's going to be changed until next meeting, review them one more time. There was good attendance and a lot of good discussion. And thanks to Amy for her help organizing that. And also Monday, I had more discussions with on Drain Seventy Seven. With Iowa Prison Industries, still working on ideas. And, um, the scope of that, everybody needs to understand, it's not Graham Park. It is from Eighteenth Street. To the bridge on Eleventh Street. So right now, the cleanup, I think when most people think that, say that, we're talking about removing trees that can obstruct. Um, or catch stuff and obstruct water. Moving downstream. Tuesday noon, Gene and I had CCGP board meeting. Wednesday, um. A couple of us had lunch with the ambulance crew. And, uh, I did attend a jury trial on Wednesday also. Thursday, I went secondary roads, looked at claims and did sit in the new wheel loader. And Friday courthouse claims. Saturday, I did ride with a deputy and we checked out the bridge on three hundredth and three hundred and twentieth, that'll be replaced with box culverts. And this week, city council tonight. And happy Thanksgiving.
I'll go. Last week, um. Went to the ambulance department, had a, it was just kind of nice camaraderie, chili cook off with the ambulance department, which was fun. Then, um, Amy Fernading and I had some conversations on the safety committee, and we are trying to do a little bit more research on. Onboarding pricing for drug testing and. Physicals, we're looking at to see if we can't find the best price, um. Throughout the options that we have in Carroll County. And it's intriguing, I've learned more about drug testing than I ever have in my life, but there is, like, there's different tiers that you can screen for. Um, and St. Anthony's, McFarland, and Manning all offer it, but. Uh, the nice part about St. Anthony's is they are open twenty four seven, so if we have something happen and we have to have somebody drug tested, if they're in a county vehicle, they can go there right away and it can be done. Um, but also leaving the options for Manning, if there was an emergency situation, they can go to Manning, and then. Um, we may have to decide between McFarland and St. Anthony's, and that would be. Where everybody goes for every department, that would be the sheriff, secondary roads, those are our two main ones that utilize that service. Um, set up Friday, set the agenda. Reviewed payables, and then I did go into every elected official's office to. I tried to do that to see how things go, and Mark, I would highly recommend that, and then you can kind of learn what each department does. Um. Working with Mike Anderson, we are going to meet with the city one more time for the two mile discussion, and then we will bring it before the board. Um, board supervisors, and we will make a decision on our end, what will be. Going forward, what that looks like. Uh, we're gonna give them one more. Work with session to kind of go over every option, if we change it, what it looks like, what it, and things like that, and then we will bring those suggestions to the board, and then the board will make a decision. Kind of hoping we meet with them that within this next week. Thanksgiving, I don't know if that. Throws anything off, but I know Mike has been trying to set up a meeting with them, um, as soon as possible. This week I have the newspaper radio, and I think that's it, and happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, uh, I had a light week this week, uh, Tuesday is CCGP board meeting. Uh, there's always seems to be some, a lot of activity there, she's, uh. Lot of interest if we, if it all. I'm sure not all of it will come to fruition, but. It's at least the activities there. Uh, I had several. Phone conversations with Zach on different projects and stuff. And that was about the extent of it. This week I have nothing, so happy Thanksgiving.
I think of the Carroll area childcare. Um, pretty interesting, I don't mind a little bit that, uh, they got rooms they aren't even using because they don't have the staff to put kids in there. So big, big topic, what they were doing there, talking about wages and things like that, trying to see if they could ice more people, so. Anyway, my is a piece cake, you buy your kid there, and that's all happened, uh, kind of close to that, so they do a good job the way it's looking today, so. What they had. Still setting up some contacts, Courtney sent me the information, so I'm just gonna start emailing contacts and, uh. Search more meetings, we'll see how it goes, so I don't want to be really busy at job first year, but we'll see how it goes.
Right. I also, um, have been in contact, we, I met with Jeff Collin, and we'll be meeting with, I'll be meeting with Jeff Collin and Franzen to discuss some of the. Uh, proceed policy or procedures I want to have down in the courthouse. Within the next month or so. Safe.
And you know what, Sarah just emailed us all and said, the zoning ordinance should. Be or already cover our, you know, comprehensive plan for changing ordinance, there shouldn't be a charge if we change anything.
Okay.
Thank you, Chef.
All right. Um, Courtney, what do you got for next week?
I have two funding. I have two funding requests from CASA. I don't know, wait a minute. Let me back up, Family Crisis Center. And I have the C A S I E, which I always say cat CASA, but it's CASA report. It's the one we use for, um, getting reimbursed from DHS for our expenses for having a local office. We do it every year, so we did get that report back.
Comments from those in attendance?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.